Are we recording, Ms. Conneke? Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mr. Zarzaki, can you please call roll?
Ms. Chick?
Janice Chick, Northfield Township, Washtenaw County, Michigan.
Mr. Dwyer?
Present, Northfield Township.
Mr. Gustafson is going to be absent with notice. Mr. Aquinto?
Present, Northfield Township.
Mr. Infante?
Absent with notice.
Oh, couldn't get that one. All right. And Mr. Roman?
Here, Northfield Township.
Zarzaki, John Zarzaki, Northfield Township, Washtenaw.
Okay, thank you. Make the motion, we adopt the agenda.
移到
Support by Mr. Aquinto. Any questions, comments on the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
O's. Ayes have it. Ms. Conneke, will go to call to the public, please.
Thank you, Chair. At this time, we'll have a call to the public for items on the agenda. If there is any member of the public who wishes to address the Planning Commission at this time, you can use the raise hand function found at the bottom of your screen and wait for me to call on you. When I do call on you to speak, please state your name and address before addressing the Planning Commission. Is there any member of the public tonight wishing to give public comment? Okay, Chair, I see no hands waiting to be acknowledged.
Thank you. In that case, there's no clarifications from commissioners, no correspondence that I'm aware of, no public hearings tonight. We'll go to reports of committees, beginning with Board of Trustees' report, Ms. Chick.
The Board met February 25th. The February 23rd meeting is actually canceled due to error in noticing the Zoom link. So the Board called a special meeting for February 25th. The Board approved the resolution for the 2021 Poverty Exemption Guidelines. The Board also approved a job posting for a code enforcement officer. And the Board approved revising the current wastewater treatment plant's work schedule to have the work plant staff return to their regular work schedules, as well as revise the township office schedule to retain reduced staffing, but be open for regular business hours now. That's all I have.
Thank you. ZBA report, Mr. Dwyer?
ZBA has not met since her last meeting.
Thank you. Staff report, Ms. Byrd?
We have nothing, thank you.
Planning consultant report, Ms. Conneke?
Thanks, Chair. Just a few items that are coming up. Everything else is on the agenda tonight. So our next meeting, we do have a public hearing set for a preliminary PUD plan that we've kind of been signaling has been coming for some time. We believe that they'll be ready for our next meeting, so that's been noticed. We're also going to be bringing the Code Enforcement Amendment back for a public hearing at the next meeting.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation report, Mr. Aquinto?
Nothing to report, thank you.
And in absence of Ms. Infante, there's no downtown planning group report. That takes us to item 9A. Unfinished business case JPC 200014 recommend to approve, approve with conditions or deny the request of Katy LLC vacant East North Territorial Road in Whitmore Lake for private road approval. And parcel numbers are B 0220 400004, B 0229 100002, B 0229 1000004, and B 0229 100005. And that's Zone RTM Research Technology Manufacturing District. With that, we'll go to Ms. Conneke.
Thank you, Chair. So this is an application that is reappearing before the Planning Commission here tonight. You may recall when the site plan was before the Planning Commission late last year, the private road was also presented and then withdrawn by the applicant. They've been working out kind of the details of a phasing strategy for this private road. So they have resubmitted a Phase 1 plan only, and that is what this private road review is covering and the approval that you are granting here tonight. So the applicant is proposing a Class A private road approximately 1,300 feet in length. So the proposed road needs to meet both the zoning ordinance standards for private roads and all standards of a Class A road. The private road requirements of the zoning ordinance, I'll move through quickly as I typically don't have much to comment on here. So item number one, roadway surface and turnaround are centered on a 66-foot wide easement for ingress and egress, and the turnaround is proposed as like a temporary stay for this Phase 1. We defer to the fire department and the township engineer to determine the specific standards for that turnaround. But otherwise, this meets the ordinance standard. The connection between the right-of-way and the public road needs to be approved by Washtenaw County Road Commission. This has been acknowledged by the applicant. Underground crossroad drainage needs to be reviewed and approved by the township engineer. We defer to him with any issues with that. And approval by the Washtenaw County Water Resource Commission has also been acknowledged by the applicant. The item number four is also about drainage, which I believe the OHM letter speaks to in more detail, and we defer to their expertise on that. The road signs need to be erected and maintained in accordance with the Michigan Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. There are two, there are signs that have been proposed on Sheet 3. And Sheet 12, the applicant has noted that they will, those signs will comply with these standards. And then the right-of-way shall provide for ingress, egress, drainage installation of maintenance, another issue that we defer to the township engineer on, but we see nothing specific. Our review really focused on the natural features assessment for the site, as there are a number of trees that are proposed to be removed for the construction of this private road. The applicant has provided a full tree survey indicating the diameter, breast height, and number of trees to be removed. That's going to be a total of 261.2 inches removed. So a total of 105 mitigation trees are required per the ordinance. The landscape plans on Sheets 15 and 16 show you exactly where the placement of those are. And then also per ordinance requirement, there's a mix of at least three tree species, which is required when we're removing this many trees on the site. So a total of 133 trees are provided. You also see along the roadway frontage there that there are a number of shrubs. Those don't necessarily count. We appreciate the landscape plan and the green belt here along the main public frontage of this site. The applicant did indicate that 14 trees proposed along the private road should not be considered counting towards this requirement, even so, this standard is met. So Phase 1 is mostly avoiding all of the wetland areas on the site. As you can see, it's kind of straddling those two wetlands to the front of the site. Wetland C and D to the front of the site. So stone water will be collected within surface basins and released in these wetlands. So the applicant acknowledges kind of the steps they need to take to make sure that that's okay. They do anticipate the Phase 2 extension will have greater impacts and probably require mitigation. And they have acknowledged, you know, that they will need to seek the correct permits in order to proceed with that. Class A road standards must also be met. We defer to the township engineer and fire department on this item. We are also recommending the Planning Commission require a performance bond. The construction of this private road is necessary for the land divisions that the applicant wants to do on the site, and also it's tied to the site plan approval that the Planning Commission has already granted. So in those cases, we typically recommend that a performance bond to ensure that the private road is built as agreed to by the Planning Commission and township is executed. So for that, the applicant must submit a construction cost approval, a construction cost estimate for approval by the township engineer. We've also noted that there's gateway signage and kind of a security feature and wall proposed here. This is really just for information of the Planning Commission right now, as well as for the information of Washtenaw County in reviewing ingress and egress at this time. Approval of that would be handled through a site plan amendment, either administratively or So based on our comments above, we're recommending approval of the private road at this time, subject to a few conditions. So approval of the turnaround is obtained from the fire department. Any comments from the township engineer? Any outside agency permits are submitted to the township prior to construction. All documentation related to the easement and the roadway maintenance is submitted, both to the township and the county register deeds. And then that construction cost estimate is submitted should the Planning Commission decide that they want to require a performance bond.
Thank you, Ms. Conneke. We'll go to, for the record, I'll state that we do have the Northfield Township Fire Department review, which does not indicate any issues. And before we get into asking questions, comments, we'll go to the OHM report by Mr. McNamara, please.
Chair. Julie did a good job, I think, covering everything. Engineering concerns that were out there. And as she mentioned, this project's gone through iterations. With the original phasing idea, we had some concerns about how that would be administered. So modifying their application to have Phase 1 be a standalone project simplifies a lot of that. Actually, as part of those changes that they made when they application to Phase 1 only, they are, the plans you have in front of you are the turnaround area to be paved and to meet the classic standards. So I'm not surprised that the fire department had no comment because it's being constructed in a permanent condition. When they come with a subsequent application to extend the road, they can choose how to deal with the end of that time. But this project that's before you does meet the standards for private road. The other item that was topic of discussion as we worked through the process with the applicant was the sanitary sewer, whether that was to be gravity sewer or forest main. Multiple discussions with the applicant, as well as with the township and Brian Rubel as well. And the gravity sanitary sewer is what is required, and that's what's shown on the plans they have before you. Notice that you've seen more than one iteration of that, previous versions. That's why we do supporting approval of the sewer as designed. The one other item, and the applicant's been working with the road commission directly. They've had a couple of reviews and received comments. And the most recent resubmital from the applicant back to the road commission happened a couple days ago. So we haven't seen a response from the road commission, but looking at what the applicant's engineer provided, it appears to me that it addresses the county's concerns. But essentially, what it comes down to is the applicant, as this is, the Phase 1 is a standalone project. They're presenting the trip generation information that's just associated with this length of road and the two parcels that are part of this split. So I'm not sure how the county will make sure that they capture the ability to have involvement when the Phase 2, if that does come before the township in the future, because that in and of itself wouldn't have any direct, you know, to Northfield Territorial right-of-way. So the county may, as part of the deed restriction for the split, may require a condition of that split be that Washtenaw County be involved in the approval process for any subsequent extension of the road. Because that would change the trips and may change what the improvement requirements are at the intersection. So to sum up, we really, we don't have any further comments on the plan. It's completed, meets the standards. We have the same, we're recommending the same conditions that Julie had already mentioned, the outside agency, permit agency approvals, as well as the bond, the estimate for the, for the, both the roadwork and the sewer work, so that can be appropriately bonded. And with that, we also did conclude, just for the applicants' benefit, some of the next things that we need, we needed prior to construction, but those wouldn't need to be conditions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McNamara. Some of your audio was fading in and out, maybe, I don't know if it's me or not, but we'll go to any questions. If anyone has any questions regarding what you updated us with, we can load that. At this time, I'd like to go to commissioners' comments or questions regarding regarding any of the reviews by both McKenna and OHM. I do have a few questions. It's more towards the OHM report, but I'll ask any other commissioners first if they have any comments. Mr. Dwyer?
Mr. McNamara, on the section, I think it says four to eight inches of gravel under three and a half inches of asphalt. Is that correct? Are we just sweetening up what's there, or are they really making grade and putting eight inches of gravel? What should they be doing now?
There is an area mainly at the entrance that does have some existing gravel that may just need to be sweetened up, but what's the requirement is eight inches. So when they get there and start cutting grade, what we can do is pothole essentially as we're going, and if there's suitable material in there, just make sure that, but the final road grade would need to be the eight inches.
Okay.
With the asphalt on top.
And then what's the sequence, do we know, of the building with regards to the road? Are they paving the road after the building and all the site development is done, or what's the phasing?
I do not know the answer to that.
My concern is, you know, what happens here is we destroy the road, they pave the road, and then we destroy it, put in the building up. And if we don't, if we leave the leveling off, leave the top off until everything's done, so we get a nice coat of asphalt, they'll destroy the two inches that's already there and have to patch all that. So can we stipulate that the surface course be left off until all site work is done and any necessary patching's done on the base before they top it?
I think you could stipulate that. You could also, as you alluded to, you could actually just require that the road be based in with the aggregate and not be paved at all. And that actually, you get the added benefit of that surfacing even helps with limiting mud tracking out onto territorial. And you don't have to worry about, you know, patching a two-inch cross section. So that really comes down to, I guess, the sequence that the applicant's intent is as it relates to the road construction and the site development, and I don't know their intent, but if that's something that, I think that is a condition you could put on it if you so chose.
I think that would be your last iteration there of leaving the gravel would be best, because I'm afraid we're going to end up with a a bad road, because it's great for the business once it's built, but it's the construction traffic that destroys it if they put it in the wrong, wrong sequence.
Agreed.
And then when they do Phases 2 and the other five lots, how are they held accountable for the road that's already completed? Does that fall under the next phase and the requirements of their work, that they have to repair the road?
So the way you could handle that, as part of, so just focusing on Phase 1 now, as part of that acceptance of that private, of the Phase 1 private road, a private road maintenance agreement's required. If there's a subsequent application to extend that road, part of the revised or modified private road agreement, you could include a section in there that essentially, prior to the acceptance of the new, longer private road, you know, it would need to be inspected by the township engineer, and any deteriorated areas, you know, in the Phase 1 section would need to be repaired and brought into a new condition. So that would be a reasonable thing to deal with in the future with the Phase 2 application.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Before we go to either Ms. Chick or Mr. Aquinto, Mr. McNamara, can you please, so with Mr. Dwyer's concern regarding holding off on the finished coat, can you, can we, can you please give me a a condition that we could add to your review, please? Some kind of wording. What's the best way to word it, I'm asking?
I think it would just simply that the asphalt paving of the private road not be done until the heavy construction for the Katy site is complete.
Thank you. I was writing it down. Thank you, Mr. McNamara. I believe, I don't know if it was Ms. Chick or Mr. Aquinto.
I'll go to Mr. Aquinto.
Thank you. I was just going to ask, why don't we ask the applicant? You know, I don't want to set precedence. We haven't done, we haven't required this type of construction in the past where they go through and then wait till their building was completed. So I was just going to suggest asking the applicant to what their desires were and what their intentions were. I believe the applicants in the participants group.
Yes.
We can, we can promote him if Keesh is there. There we go. He's acknowledged.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. It's our intention to pave the final coat after the building is up. So we're fine with your recommendation. That's kind of good practice in building and construction anyways.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Aquinto?
No, sure. Thank you.
Ms. Chick?
Actually, everybody covered it. I was just going to comment that I agreed with Mr. Dwyer's comments, because I've seen it in residential developments where exactly that's what happens. They put down asphalt. Then they're still building and the road gets torn up, and they may or may not come back to put the top on. So I think this is a good practice. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zarzaki, you have any questions, comments?
Well, basically, they've already been covered by everybody else, so again, paving the last dress coat of asphalt road like that is normally done at the end of construction, although there may be other construction in the future. Like Mr. McNamara stated, we have to, would have to add that to the next easement and maintenance agreement for that road, so when you do it in phases, it's always going to be an issue. My only question maybe to the applicant is, what is the projection for Phase 2's start or possible construction? Are we talking a year away, two years away, something like that?
Yeah, so that's a great question. I think, you know, as our group's interest in Northfield Township initially started with the Grove Facility, and we kind of ended up with a lot larger of a parcel, we wanted to make sure that we had master planned and had uses for that parcel. And so as kind of putting that together, you saw the Master Nova Business Plan Park with a couple different buildings located in the south of the that parcel there. But as the OHM engineer alluded to, we ran into some issues with that kind of just taking on a shape of its own and really inviting a lot more questions. We don't anticipate to build that until we have some end users identified. That's not going to be, I don't think, in a year or two. Hopefully, you know, someone does come. Right now, we really have the first phase planned out, and we're working out with some groups for some interest for that other building that's kind of projected to be there off of North Territorial. But to answer your question for Phase 2, for the addition of that road and to build it out, you'd really have to work with and depend on the economy and some macro factors to find users to situate there. It's not our intention as a group to personally build out, you know, facilities down there.
Okay, thank you very much. That answers my question, and, you know, so we aren't going to have a road that goes to nowhere with nothing on it, so thank you.
So I guess it's my turn, and it's mostly for Mr. McNamara. I see in our packet, we were included, the response letters from Washtenaw Engineering, who is the applicant's engineer, correct? We received their response letters from Reviews Number 2 and 3, but this OHM review is number 5. So were there subsequent reviews, responses from Washtenaw Engineering, Mr. McNamara?
Yes, and those were what I had alluded to with, primarily with the sanitary sewer issue. Whether that was gravity or forest main and the phasing and the, and paving the cul-de-sac to the current standard. There was discussions related to those two items.
Yeah, which were important ones if you're kind of following through the steps, you know, because the, you know, I was going through from the, from the original, you know, review 1, 2, and 3. And I see how we, you know, as of review number 3 response, we, you know, we were at the point where they were determining if they were going to do a temporary cul-de-sac or or a finished cul-de-sac, and I see that we're at the finished product now, you know, so you arrived to that. But then there was also the comment regarding a bond amount for the permanent construction of the cul-de-sac. So is that, now, in looking at your comments, your, I guess they would be conditions. Is that included? Is that what you intend to have included on your cost estimate provided by the applicant?
That's correct. That should include a cost estimate provided and a subsequent review and confirmation, and then bond and that amount.
Okay.
Condition.
Right. I just wanted to clarify that, you know, because we didn't have responses. Is it typically that you send the responses to the township, or how does the township get the responses? Are those sent directly?
Yeah, I typically send them to Mary, and she distributes to the applicant. I think in this, and I'm trying to kind of go through and line it up here, I think what might add in this particular case to confusion a little bit is the numbering may be different between, I think we kept going with, you know, we're on number 5, and I think the applicant started his numbering over when they revised from the full. So what we are calling, you know, Review 4 or 5, they may be calling Review 2. So I think if you follow the date sequence.
Right, understood. Thank you for that clarification, because I did see that, you know, Right, I understood. Thank you for that clarification because I did see that that, you know, they were speaking about the um the gravity system compared to uh the other. So that's probably what happened. But I I just wanted to make sure that we received all the information that's out there. So um so yeah, as long as we're clear uh regarding the bond, um I believe I don't have any other issues and um I don't think I have any other issues with the McKenna review either, so. One last check with the other commissioners. Is there any uh other questions, comments that may have come about? No? Uh okay, so in that case, I will make motion. You're with me here. I'll make motion to approve with conditions case JPC two zero 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 one four with the uh conditions set forth in the McKenna review dated.
February twenty third.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear that.
February twenty third.
Thank you. February twenty third and the OHM re- review dated February twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. Um and those, that the, um as a side note, those do include the um the bond request and and so that is stated in the condition. So I just want to clarify that that's my intent. And I would also like to add um item seven to the OHM report, asphalt paving be completed after construction of uh of the Katy site being complete.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Zarzaki. Any questions, comments on that motion? Um I I do have one now that I think of it. I I'm gonna make another comment, although we have the motion. Uh is Mr. McNamara still available? I see, hopefully.
Yeah.
Okay, and and we heard from i- i- and I forgot about it looking at my notes, but we just heard from the applicant that they don't really have a deadline. Although that um it's, you know, it's hard to determine that. Is there any any uh foreseeable issues that you would be concerned with in that situation with a delay, a a larger delay in the phase two?
No, not with the application as presented. It's it's standalone meets the requirements of the private road ordinance. So if phase two never happened, this it's the the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to verify that. Any other questions, comments on the motion? Seeing none, but we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Zarzaki.
Ms. Chick?
Yes.
Mr. Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr. Quito?
Yes.
Mr. Ra- oh, excuse me. Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Oh, my pleasure. And Mr. Zarzaki, yes. Uh so we have a passing five with two, two absences.
Thank you. So moving on, we will go to item nine B, further discussion of the development manual procedures. With that, we'll go to Ms. Conneke, please.
Thank you, Chair. Uh so this is the long awaited draft of the development packeted procedures. So the township has um one kind of main site plan review manual that has the process for site plan reviews and then a lot of applications uh tacked onto that and then separate packets for things like rezoning, conditional uses, et cetera. And those all make up this thing that we're calling your development packets. And so we have been working on updating all of that documentation as well as all of your applications. You don't see the applications in here. We're still working through the actual forms essentially with uh administration because that's more their purview. Uh what we're presenting here tonight, I'm hoping to get some planning commission feedback on um are is really the content and how it's presented and whether it's clear, whether it's accurate to how the process goes. Um and specifically the site plan review checklist. Something that's a little bit quirky about the township zoning ordinance is that there's no site plan review checklist provided in your ordinance. It just says you have to provide all the materials required in the checklist, which is codified into this ordinance. Um I noted in my memo uh that I submitted to you along with this draft that uh there's language in the zoning ordinance that says amending this packet requires an amendment of the ordinance. Um we have a question out to the township attorney on that specific process for you. I was hoping to have an answer for you tonight on how we go forward from here, but I I unfortunately do not have an answer to that at this time. That's really just about, you know, is it a public hearing? Um how do we put the ordinance language together when it's a standalone packet, things like that? And so just to kind of give you a little bit of a primer here, we've added this new section at the front called the development procedures overview. This summarizes what we're hoping in a lot more user-friendly terms. Uh what you do when you show up and you just, you want to know uh who do I talk to, what review steps are involved, what ordinance standards apply, when I want to do a certain type of activity. So page two of that packet proposed activity walks you through a lot of different requests that we typically get. Who's the reviewing body or what type of review is required? On the next page, um speaks to who the reviewing bodies are and what the steps are. Uh moving into the actual packets, these are where we have the step-by-step. This is what I think was really muddy about the the old applications. There were sometimes contradictions in them. There were outdated section references. Um and every step of the project wasn't necessarily spelled out. Um what we're hoping is people can pull this packet and they see this list and they know exactly what steps they have to take and who they have to talk to to get through the entitlements process. So we created a new packet for administrative site plan review. This is something that didn't currently exist. Um we've really beefed up the and updated the site plan review packet um to take people through that planning commission approval step, but then what happens after? Um you know, sign plans, uh engineering plan review, pre-construction, as-built, these are all steps that are um in the ordinance but are not necessarily readily available to applicants when they come to the township. Uh like I mentioned, that site plan review checklist, which is on page six of the site plan review packet, um just pulled apart a lot of the information that was in the existing uh site plan checklist. But then also we took a careful review through the ordinance as well as what is kind of typical procedure with the planning commission to make sure that every last thing that you typically want to see in the submission is listed here for applicants. Um the other packets that we've done are the conditional use permit review. Um something to note here is um the ordinance standard does uh only require a preliminary or a sketch plan essentially to be submitted with a conditional use approval. It's probably more typical that we get a full site plan review. So we've just clarified. Um you know, you could do either or and what the process might look like separately if you choose those. And then the zoning amendment request for both text amendment and rezoning. Um I'm forgetting one, which is private roads, which we just did. Um private road packet was really, really minimal. It basically just listed what the submission requirements are. So uh Mr. McNamara and I went, really went through this and tried to spell out that process better um for for applicants looking to do that kind of thing. Um and with that, um I think we can take kind of general questions, comments, and feedbacks here tonight. Um since we do have a couple of members absent and this is a lot of information, um I think what might be a a good procedure is to give all of you a week, maybe if you have more specific comments and feedback and you can just email that directly to me to be incorporated into a final draft.
Thank you, Ms. Conneke. I do agree, more time is needed on the commissioner's part. It's very large. Um the draft was rough to s- that's my opinion. It was a rough, it was a it was a rough read for a lot of different reasons, but I I'm gonna make my comments first and I'll go to the other commissioners. Um Ms. Conneke, did did you join us in October? Is that when it was?
Yes.
Okay. Um and just for for the record, and and I know you're, this is your memo and it's when when you came on board with Northfield in in October, but this is actually, for the record, it's actually an item that we've been rassling with for a couple of years, actually maybe even more than two years. It's been, it's been on the list, the to-do list for quite some time. Um but um my, I want to bring up this point before we get into a ton of details on uh what what you've provided us is that um we know now, you know, we know that it's in your memo that um a text amendment is required to the ordinance to do any updates on a package such as this. So how it, how it got to be that way, I I don't know and I don't, I don't agree with it. Um I see you've contacted the township attorney. You're waiting for a comeback, but um I would prefer that this um be removed from the, from the ordinance that way because in the future, if there's any updates, it's got to go through text amendment. That's, that's a large, that's a large thing to do. It's takes a lot of time and effort and um even yearly, an update could be done as far as the process goes. And the last thing I want to say is that we're, right now, we're we're in a unique situation at the township because uh we 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 know, we have an absence of the of the of the township manager. And um with the future status of that position or otherwise, we, you know, we don't know. And it's yet to be determined by the Board of Trustees, but I really feel um this item should be tabled, in my opinion, until uh the administrative positions are filled to allow um any potential adjustments by a new person in those in the, in the position. And especially since a text amendment's needed for the ordinance, um I think we should also uh look to to see if we can uh have that changed. So and and I know you put a lot of time and effort into this and I'm sure it's not going to be uh discarded, but uh you know, to say a new, a new person that may come and board, onboard with the township may have additions, um uh run things a different way. We we just don't know. So that's, that's my, my basic opinion of where we're at with this right now. But I'd like to hear from the other commissioners also. Mr. Iquinto?
I do agree as well, and uh we are also absent a code enforcement officer. That this would be proper because they're gonna be doing a lot of the enforcing after we, you know, we enact uh so that they have some input, but definitely for a if the township does hopefully stay with the township manager, that they have input as well. Uh so I I am in full agreement that uh y- you know, the consultants kind of wait and take input from us. We give input and I and I will submit an email to you with some of my details, but there we do wait before we take it up again until the uh board advises us that they have positions in place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Iquinto. Ms. Chick?
Yeah, well, I think Mr. Roman and Mr. Iquinto basically stated what um I was gonna say anyway, but we do have a um a lack of administrative oversee uh in the building department and I think that needs to be taken care of first. Uh because as Mr. Roman said, that they could come in and they have a different perspective or a different experience that they can bring to the document. And uh we don't want to have to change it again. We need something that's, you know, comprehensive and sustainable and uh works for everybody. Um I I do have a question and I appreciate Ms. Conneke, your uh work that you've done so far. Um uh it's so this, these separate, these are separate packets, but we've gotten it all in one packet, right? Okay, so when a uh applicant comes in, are they given this packet or is this something for administrative use only?
They would, applicants would be given that packet. You know, my recommendation would be that each of them is posted on the website. So people know when they're, when they're coming to the township, which reference document they can pull.
Okay, so and I want, I would hope that I'm knowing that you've talked to administer the the people in the building department, the staff, that when an applicant comes in, that they don't just hand them a packet, that they actually sit down with the the applicant and this is what, page by page, if you have to, this is what we need from you so that they understand that um what we want and what they're gonna get from us. So I I don't know if that's been explained with the staff or not, okay?
Sure, and I I think that this is just as helpful for staff, honestly, as it is, as it will be for applicants. When we have pre- pre-application meetings, it's a lot of jumping all around the ordinance to try to find the right section for them and bring that and send them to the right place. What we're trying to do is have a one-stop shop. So just if we have it in front of them, we can go section by section and reference what's applicable to them. Um and they see every step of the process just kind of laid out clearly there for them. Um.
I think what you're looking for from us is input on what you've given us so far, or do we want to wait if we're gonna table it? How do you want to do this?
I would defer to the planning commission to decide how you want to proceed. You know, I I wanted to bring something back in a timely fashion because I know this has been um something you've been waiting anxiously to see. Um at least wanted to show that we've made substantial progress on it. I understand the challenges and the and the unexpected kind of turnover that the township has been experiencing. So I'm I'm open to your feedback on on how you, how you would want to handle that. One thing I will say is this packet primarily follows the current administrative procedures in your ordinance. It does not really offer many changes. So if, because that requires a lot of text amendments to your ordinance that we would then need to pair up with. So by laying it all out here and getting some feedback on where you think things might need to be tweaked, I might be able to then flag those sections of the ordinance and say, these are all the text revisions that would need to be made to effectuate um those desired changes. So they go hand in hand.
And we should probably hear from the attorney first before we do anything, I think. Okay.
Be- before I get to Mr. Dwyer or Mr. Zarzaki, Ms. Ms. Chick, that that's one of my points is that um you know, you're you're bringing up some very fine details of how the administration would handle situations at the o- we don't with a new person, we don't know how any of that's going to be, if it's gonna be changed, you know? And I'm glad Ms. Conneke pointed out that um this document basically goes by what we're doing today or what what we've been doing recently. And uh I know there's, I know just looking at it, there there needs to be changes. So I'm not, I'm not certain that um, I'm not certain that we should even provide it as individual commissioners uh any more details yet until we we know more about what's happening. But um I appreciate your comments, though. Uh we'll go to Mr. Dwyer.
Yeah, des- despite all the likely uh changes and comments on the details, I like the concept. You know, I I like what I see. I think it's a, you know, a good idea. I think it's really helpful. Just page three, the summary of review procedures. I wish I'd seen that a few years ago. I'd be much more informed about what I'm supposed to be doing. So the whole concept I I I agree with and I I I like.
Thank you. And and it has been some time that we've been trying to develop something. So, Mr. Zarzaki?
Yes, thank you. I agree that we need to table, you know, further discussions on this, but each of us can obviously take this package and look at what we think needs to be changed and wait until we do have a an administrator and a a code enforcement officer. The one thing I would like to see done, however, is uh this Conti could get a hold of the attorney and find out how we can remove this from, you know, section thirty-six dash eight six six. So that once we do have these people in place and we've reviewed it, we don't have to go through all this again. We could easily remove it now and then we can deal with it a little bit more orderly later on.
I think that's a good suggestion. I have a few ideas. It's either um remove the language entirely or um just remove the portion of that sentence that says made explicitly part of this ordinance and requires an amendment. I think it's pretty easy for the planning commission to initiate a text amendment where you delete language from something. Um but the township attorney might have some other insight that that we we should know about before we proceed with that.
Yeah, like I said, we've removed it. It will make it easier to approve it later on and get input from everybody else. I don't want to just, you know. I don't want to just, you know, put it off that point until later. We can do that right now or relatively quick.
And I I agree with Mr Zarzaki, as long as it's, you know, the direction that the board, I mean right now, Ms Conneke, who who do you ask regarding something like this right now, other than going directly to the board? There's really not an individual, so that's that's my point. Um and I'm not so sure that that we should take that on immediately either, I I just don't know. And there's no good answer, uh this um with with this, with the situation, you know, that we have at the office, so. Um but I I would be in favor, like Mr Zarzaki said, to get anything removed so that an update can be more easily had in the future. Um so that's something that you can uh take back with you, I guess, as the main uh one of the main issues. And then um certainly the the planning commissioners can keep what we've been uh handed here and we could look through it as time permits and see uh what our thoughts are individually. And not to say uh we we really can't match them up with with anybody's process, you know? I mean, it might change, so. But we could consider that. So is is there any other, any other later comments, questions regarding what we have? If if none, then I would like to make a motion to table um the draft development packet review until how should I say it? Until the
For a term of not more to exceed uh one hundred and eighty days?
Yeah, we could, we could put a time limit, I suppose, yes, that's a good suggestion. No more than a hundred and eighty days and knowing that, so anyway, I'll wait for a second on that motion.
Support.
Go ahead.
Uh Mr Iquinto, I believe. Questions, comments on that motion? Um so it's, I mean, it's at least a takeaway from Ms Conneke to have a direction at this point. Agreed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, um any other questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll do roll call vote, Mr Zarzaki.
Ms Chick?
Yes.
Mr Dwyer?
Yes.
Mr Quinto?
Yes.
Mr Roman?
Yes.
Mr Zarzaki, yes. Five approved, two absent.
Yeah, thank you, Ms Conneke, for providing this, though I know you've been working on it.
So with that, we go to uh item ten, there's no new business. We'll go to approval of proceeding minutes. I make a motion, we approve the minutes from February seventeenth and dispense with the reading.
Support.
supported by Ms Chick. Any questions, comments or corrections on those minutes? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Both. I say have it. Uh go final call to the public, Ms Conneke, please.
Thank you, Chair. At this time, we'll have our final call to the public for items both on and off the agenda. We've had some people join, so I'll go over the rules once more. Um if you wish to address the planning commission, please use the raise hand function. You can find that at the bottom of your screen and wait to be acknowledged. When I do acknowledge you, um you will be given permission to uh unmute and please state your name and address for the record before addressing the planning commission. All right, so we already have uh one person wishing to address the planning commission I'm going to promote, Steve Grono.
Hi, folks, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, my goodness, well, I've been listening in on the meeting. What a amazing uh uh group of people we have in Northfield Township. I've been involved in so many townships over my thirty five year career, thirty five year career in development. And uh you guys are certainly on the top of your game. I think you have a lot of important decisions to make. I'm um glad to be part of this process. You're going to see me next week or I'm sorry, uh on the seventeenth uh for our preliminary and um I'm very excited, I'm very, very encouraged, very excited. Um I love all the people that we've met there, everybody that's been so helpful with us in making our paperwork run smoothly and to get the things that you've needed in front of you on a timely basis. It's uh it's it's free, it's really gone well. I can tell you that so many townships um could learn from Northfield Township because you guys are doing a great job. So with that, um I just wanted to say uh just quickly, what we're looking for next time is um we have a nine month contract with the landowner. We are six months into it. Most of it was the state uh health department trying to get uh an understanding if we can, if we can get the water system that we need to uh build the development that we're contemplating. Uh and uh we have met with two different planners, uh the previous planner and your current planner. Um I think you made a great decision uh in what you've done with your current planner. Uh our experience, it's just coming from my side of the table, has been very positive and communicative and responsive. Uh I think which is very important. So just with that, I just wanted to say uh good night to you all and uh look forward to uh seventeenth. Um if anyone has questions before the meeting, I am fully available. My cell phone, eight one oh five nine nine five one four seven, I answer it um virtually all the time. Um the development that we've done, chestnutcrossing.com. If anybody wants to look at what we did over in Howell, that's what we're trying to do in your township for the most part, along with sixty homes and an assisted living facility, possibly a commercial corner. That's really is, it's a simple project, um I hope we can get through it. And I hope everyone is excited as about it as I am. So uh uh immediately following the seventeenth, if we do receive a preliminary approval, we are going to spend sixty thousand dollars on a twelve inch well uh to confirm with the state that the water system will work. That's the next step for us, just to kind of give everyone a little background. Um yeah, if we do not receive a preliminary approval, we will not drill the sixty thousand dollar well. Um and we'll have to delay until such a time that we can receive some sort of a preliminary approval. So that just sets the table for the, I guess, the prep work that we're going to do before the meeting, all of us together. If anybody has questions about what we're trying to do, I'd love to talk to anyone uh who has any um opinions or 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 thoughts about what we're trying to do there in your community. Uh we're certainly uh not wanting to do anything nobody wants. Um so if anyone would like to talk to me, I'm available and uh I I I'm excited again. And uh thanks for your time, you guys, you've had a long night, a lot to think about, so I'll sign off with that. Thank you so much, uh uh Mr Chairman, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um I see Key Ches's hand raised again. I'm not sure if it's an error, but I will promote him.
Thanks, Julie. I just wanted to thank the planning commission for the approval on the private road today. Um we have some work ahead of us in terms of getting our some permits and the proper agency approvals, but we look forward to building out Nova Parkway and the KT Growth Facility. Just being an active member of the D D A and the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other member of the public wishing to address the planning commission at this time? Okay, I think everyone has had a chance to speak. I would just add, um despite Mr Grono's very generous invitation for you to call him as your planner, I would advise against ex parte communications with an applicant.
Right.
Thank you, um comments from commissioners, begin with Mr Iquinto.
No comment, thank you, sir.
Ms Chick?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr Zarzaki?
No additional comments, thank you.
Mr Dwyer?
Anyone tell me which parcel Mr Grono is referring to and what the current zoning is on that?
Ms Conneke?
The current zoning is L R. I don't have the parcel number readily available for you.
Description, just crossroads.
It's uh Whitmore Lake Road, North Territorial and the northwest pro- uh corner as well as the property across the street from the high school.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And no comments from me. The uh next regular meeting will be March seventeenth, twenty twenty one, and I make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
supported by Mr Iquinto, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, I say have it, thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone, good night.
Good night. Great job on that uh packet, by the way.
Thank you. I know it's got a long way to go, we'll get there.
I know. Good start.
Absolutely.